Hello, welcome to the 2023 Local Election Forum for the Alva Manville Area Chamber of Commerce. I want to welcome you, I want to welcome our crowd. Thank you all very much for being here this evening to hear from all of our local candidates that will be on this year's ballot. My name is Kerry Perrin. I am the President and CEO of the Alva Manville Area Chamber of Commerce, and we traditionally like to be the host for local elections like these. As you probably already know, and as many of you know that are watching this, local elections are some of the most important elections that will have the most direct impact on our everyday lives as citizens in the area. So we're very thankful that you're willing to do this and participate and educate yourself and inform yourself for the upcoming election. We also thank all of our candidates that are willing to give us their time tonight so that they can give you as much information about themselves before you go to the ballot. I want to thank a few people that are helping us do this. We want to thank Heights Baptist Church here in Alvin, Texas, that is hosting us and letting us use their audio and visual equipment so that we can record this for everyone, and also giving us such a nice building to meet in and host this. I want to thank Smoke &amp; D's barbecue food truck that's outside giving us dinner tonight. I want to thank them for being here as well. I want to thank again all of our candidates. I want to thank my staff for helping us get this organized. And then I want to thank our Governmental Relations Committee. We have a committee of local officials and chamber members that meet together monthly to discuss things that are going on in our government, our local government agencies, and how we can better work together for our members. At this point, I would like to ask you to silence your cellphones this evening, now that I say that I should probably do the same, and just make sure that we're as quiet as possible during this time. We do have a meet and greet area out in the lobby if you would like to talk to candidates after they're done here and get to know them a little better. At this time, I'd like to introduce one of the pastors here at Heights Baptist Church. They're going to lead us in an invocation to get us started, and then I'm going to introduce you to our chamber chairman. I want to introduce you to Matt Hogan. He is the Worship Pastor here at Heights Baptist Church. He's very much helping us tonight get all of this recorded. So everybody, welcome, Matt.
Good evening and welcome to Heights Baptist Church. Would you please pray with me? Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the opportunity to come together and serve our city. Lord, we want to be people that are not just in our community but for our community. And so I pray tonight that we would make wise decisions, that we would look to elect people who would put their city first, and who would put their community first. Lord, people that would have the same mind as Christ Jesus, who did not consider equality a thing to be grasped, but emptied himself and took the form of a servant, being obedient to death, even death on a cross, and then rose again on the third day, that we might find new faith and new life in Him. We ask this in Your name. Amen.
Thanks, Matt. I want to introduce Russell Bynum. He is our Chairman of the Board for the Alva Manville Area Chamber of Commerce. He is also...oh, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead. I actually want to introduce our Alvin Mayor-elect, Gabe Adami. We're going to have him...oh, nope. Am I getting that right? Nope, sorry. I did have it right the first time. My bad. Russell Bynum is our chairman, and he's also the General Manager of Hillwood Communities here in Manville. And so we're going to introduce our chairman. He's going to lead us in our pledges and also introduce us to our Mayor-elect. Everybody, welcome Russell Bynum.
Evening. All right, if everybody can stand, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Well, welcome, everybody. Thank you all for coming out tonight. It's great to see you all. This program is going to last for the next few hours, and so we welcome you all. Thank you for coming. Thank you to the candidates that will be here now and coming up soon. Did want to explain a little bit of the order this evening. The first part of this program will be for the City of Alvin. We'll hear from those candidates. The next part, the middle of the sandwich here, is Alvin ISD, and we'll be hearing from those candidates. And then last, but certainly not least, we'll hear from the City of Manville candidates. So looking forward to a wonderful, a great program, and we're so glad that you all could join us here this evening. I'd like to now introduce the Alvin Mayor-elect, Gabe Adami, also former Chairman of the Alvin Manville Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to also just welcome everyone to be here this evening. Public service is something that really takes a special kind of person to selflessly give of themselves, be willing to make certain sacrifices away from work and family. And so I tip my hat to the candidates that are here this evening, to each of you that are still in the crowd. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Thanks again to Heights Baptist Church for being here and hosting us. I am honored to be unopposed as the Mayor-elect for the City of Alvin. The last nine years on council have been just truly remarkable. I've learned a lot, and we are blessed to have some of the best department heads in our community that really believe in bringing this community forward. We've got a tremendous amount of projects that are in place. You guys are probably familiar with them, with developments. We've got lots of residential developments coming in. We've got a lot of infrastructure that we continue to improve upon, and I think that the next 10 years for this city are going to be truly monumental. And we've got to really have the right people in place to make sure that we continue to carry the city forward in a very positive manner that's also very fiducially responsible. So again, thank you all for being here. I look forward to this evening, and good luck.
Thank you, Mayor-elect. At this time, I'd like to introduce our moderator for the first half of our evening. Carolyn Waits is the Branch Manager for the Manville Public Library, and she is also on our board at the chamber. She is the Chairwoman for our Governmental Relations Committee, who helps us put this together. She's also the Chairwoman for our Governance Division of our board, which does a lot with advocating for local and small businesses with our local officials. And we work in such a great community where our local officials do work very closely with us, they do have a good relationship with us, and so we're very thankful for just what this community has built over the years and decades, even long before I got here. So I want to welcome our moderator for this part of the evening, Carolyn Waits.
If I fall off this stool, please pick me up. Good evening, everyone. Want to thank you for being here, and tonight, I'm going to go over a short explanation of the rules that have been set up for tonight. First, each candidate will be given two minutes to make an opening statement regarding their objectives and their platform. Each candidate will be given up to one minute to answer the questions. All candidates' answers and statements will be timed, and the timer will start when the candidate begins to speak. And then finally, each candidate will be given two minutes for a closing statement. We're going to start with the City of Alvin Elections. First, to acknowledge, in the unopposed race for the City of Alvin, we have Gabe Adami as the Mayor-elect, and then we have our candidates for City Council District E, Megan DeKaiser and Larry Nelson, and thank you so much for joining us tonight. All right, we're going to start with Megan. I will ask you the question, and then Larry, I'm going to follow up with the exact same question, and we've got the timers up on the screens. First of all, what prior experiences or previous successes uniquely position...I'm sorry, yes.
Opening statement?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I forgot the opening statement. Megan, why don't you go ahead and give your opening statement, and then Larry will follow you.
Good evening. My name is Megan. I'm running for Alvin City Council District E, and I am a wife, a mother of four, and an attorney. I just want to tell you a little bit about myself because a lot of people don't know, but I'm originally from southeast Houston, and I come from humble beginnings. My parents didn't graduate high school, they didn't go to college or obtain any graduate degrees. When I started law school, my oldest son was 10 weeks old, and despite the challenges that I had at that time in my life with my first husband being deployed in the military and stationed elsewhere, I still managed to graduate on time and pass the bar exam the first time. Now, I'm not telling everyone this because I want to brag, but I just want everybody to know that I'm not just a girl in a dress. I can do hard things, and I'm not afraid to put in the work to make things happen. So when I met my husband, Holland, in our last semester of law school, we shared over a similar background and shared experiences. You know, he and I wanted to get out of Houston and come to Alvin where they were like-minded folks, where we could raise our family and our kids could grow and be safe. And so recently, I'm sitting at home with him, watching the news, and thinking to myself, what in the world is going on? There's craziness all over the news. How can I help? Right? So with listening to people, they're saying the best way to get involved is on the local level. And with an open seat on City Council, I said, sign me up. I am well-equipped, and I'm ready to work, and I want to help, and because I have a vested interest in Alvin, I want to make a difference. This is where I plan on staying, and this is where my kids are going to grow up. So I'm ready to dig in and get to work for Alvin. Thank you.
Go ahead, go. My name is Larry Nelson, and I'm running for City Council District E. A little bit about me, you may recall that I was on City Council from 2002 to 2008. I really enjoyed serving the citizens of Alvin during that time. I was born and raised in Alvin, graduated from Alvin High School in 1982, completed my BS in Industrial Engineering from Texas A&amp;M University. My wife, Beth, and I have lived in this district since 1992. We have three children and a daughter-in-law. Two of the kids are adults. They went through the Alvin schools, and our third child is a sixth grader at Fairview Junior High. In addition to serving on the City Council, I was also on the Planning Commission, and I served on two Charter Review Committees. Some of Alvin's best assets are our first responders. I have a record of supporting the first responders. I believe the Council and city staff have Alvin in the right direction. But I just want to make sure with this impending growth that we have quality development. Having lived and been involved in Alvin for many years, I understand the importance of City Council making decisions and seeing the result of those decisions that happen in the future. I have the experience needed to be a Council member. I would appreciate your support for City Council District E.
Okay, thank you for that. Now, we can get started. We're going to start with you, Megan, for the first question. What prior experiences or previous successes uniquely position you to be the best candidate to serve as a City Council member?
Well, as an attorney, I have lots of experience reading laws, ordinances, legislation, and understanding how they work, interpreting them, and figuring out how they can work in conjunction with state laws and federal regulations. I'm a good communicator. I'm able to listen effectively to my clients, and if I get elected, I would be able to use my listening skills for the constituents to take their concerns, give them options, and then talk about feasible solutions. I don't plan on promising things, making promises I can't keep, or telling you I can move a mountain if I can't. That's just not practical, right? But I can say, these are our options, this is what we can do with that. As a small business owner, I have experience managing resources and prioritizing projects. And just generally speaking, my legal experience gives me a good platform to be a successful Councilwoman.
Thank you, Larry. I'm going to ask you the same question. What prior experiences or previous successes uniquely position you to be the best candidate to serve as a City Council member?
Well, I'm going to repeat some of my opening statements. I was on the City of Alvin Planning Commission for four years. I served on two Charter Review Committees. I was elected to City Council District E. I served three terms from 2002 to 2008. Above all that, I've been a citizen of Alvin for many decades. I won't tell you how many decades. But more important than all that is I'm just a citizen that wants to serve the City of Alvin and help the citizens of Alvin. Thank you.
All right, now we're going to flip-flop, and Larry, you're going to answer the next question first. What do you find as the greatest current strength and the greatest future need for the City of Alvin?
The greatest strength that we have are the people in Alvin, and I will also include the city staff. Through the years, I've personally had help from the city staff on multiple occasions. It's the people and the staff that make this a great place to live. Now, the future need?
What do you feel are the greatest future need for the City of Alvin?
Okay. The greatest future need we are facing is infrastructure. Mayor Adami alluded to that in his opening statement. I will put three items in the infrastructure: wastewater treatment, water, and roads. After talking with a couple of current Council members, the topic of the wastewater treatment expansion plant came up. I can tell you that was a big topic on Council 15 years ago, and it's still a big topic, and I'm sure will be into the future. Water, we all use water. We will only need water, more water, as we grow. And then roads would be my third choice, and I'm talking about the city roads right now, not the state or the county roads, but the city roads must be maintained on a regular basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan, what do you find as the greatest current strength and the greatest future need for the City of Alvin?
Like Larry, I agree that Alvin's greatest strength is its people. Alvin is great because it has a small-town feel. My husband and I moved here because we wanted a sense of community. Alvin is also conveniently located minutes from Houston, the medical center, and less than an hour away from the Gulf. I think that the fact that we still have green space and we're not yet considered a part of the greater Houston area is one of the reasons why Alvin is so special. Something I think Alvin needs is a leadership that's willing to protect Alvin as much as possible, going into the future while preserving the existing fabric of the community. I mean, just last week, my husband and I bought a property on South Street to use as our office, and we had to fight off investors to come out on top in that deal. That's what we're up against if we let investors come in and buy up all of our green space. So, thank you.
Okay, now we're going to go with Megan to start with question number three. What do you feel are the top three issues facing the city?
Definitely, I believe that we need to be very responsible and mindful and intentional with the growth and development that we allow in Alvin. I really believe that if we let for-profit investors come in, buy up all of our space, and then take that wealth elsewhere, Alvin will become a community of dependence, and that's not the vision that I have for the future of Alvin. I also believe that along with that growth, we do need to maintain our infrastructure and continue to build new infrastructure to keep up with the growing population. Something that goes right along with that is public safety. The police department needs more officers as our population grows so they can continue to keep Alvin safe. My views on hiring and retaining officers has earned me the endorsement of the Alvin Police Officers Association because of that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Larry, what do you feel are the top three issues facing the city?
Well, we've kind of touched on this a little bit before, but my three issues would be growth, infrastructure, to handle the growth, and ordinances to control the growth. Growth, when I campaigned the first time 20, 21 years ago, I campaigned on that growth was coming to Alvin, and now we all see it. It's here. Growth can be a good thing as long as we plan for it. Our job on Council is to make sure the end result is something that we can all be proud of in Alvin. The infrastructure, I kind of already talked a little bit about. Infrastructure is important to everybody, the new residents and the long-term residents that have been here for a long time. Ordinances to control the growth. If we don't have ordinances to give some control, then we will end up with sprawl in the future. What do you want Alvin?
Try one next to you. Oh, you got cut off. I'm sorry. I thought your mic was here.
Okay, next question. Thank you, Larry. Larry, we're going to ask you the next question. What are two practical policy initiatives that you plan to place on an agenda and get a vote on during your first year on Council?
First, the city needs to place more importance on code enforcement, especially the repeat offenders. I know the code enforcement officers know who the repeat offenders are. I'll give you an example. We had an out-of-town landlord that owned a house near us that never mowed the yard. Yard would grow, the grass would get high, we have to wait. It had to get six to eight inches tall before we could contact code enforcement. We would email them, they'd come out and check and say, yes, the yard needs to be mowed. I think they sent out a certified letter. We had to wait another 30 days, then they would come back and see the yard has not been cut yet, so then they would finally issue the violation. Lo and behold, the grass would get cut by the landowner. This process could take several months. Every summer, it happened several times a year, or several years in a row. Second?
Thank you. Megan, what are two practical policy initiatives that you plan to place on an agenda and get a vote on during your first year on Council?
The first thing I would do is propose that we hire more officers. Our population is already growing, and if we need 60 officers, let's say, to keep our community safe, I think we should be proactive about hiring and have at least 63 or 65 so we can stay ahead of the curve and not have to scramble and get more officers last minute whenever we need them. The second thing I would do is I would propose an amendment to the existing impact fee ordinance to differentiate and distinguish between for-profit developers and private citizens that are building on their own property. A private citizen, resident of Alvin that's been there a long time, that wants to build their own house, is not the same thing as someone who's coming in, building a bunch of houses, making a profit, and then leaving. So for an impact fee to be applied to both of those people would be unfair, and so I think it would be an easy thing to do to make that distinction, to distinguish that.
All right, Megan, next question goes to you to start. Regarding transportation, what is your vision for local mobility? Obviously, there are partnerships necessary with state and federal entities when it comes to road projects, but what are your ideas to address adequate roadways and mobility as the city continues to grow exponentially?
This is a tough question, but I did some thinking about this one. And with regard to transportation, I think we should look at our neighbors and learn from their mistakes. Just because we make a road wider does not mean that it's going to necessarily fix a traffic problem. Just look at the Katy Freeway in Houston. It's like the largest, or if not, one of the largest highways in the nation, and it hasn't done anything to fix a traffic problem, okay? Because a lot of people like to think of traffic like a liquid, that if you open up a path, it'll go there. But if you go back and look, it tends to be more like a gas. If you open up more space, it'll just fill up the space, right? So if we can separate the traffic and have more areas for people to travel, I think that'll help the city with traffic issues. Also, another initiative would be to promote businesses in the downtown district area so we can have walkability there and include sidewalks in that.
All right, Larry, same question. Regarding transportation, what is your vision for local mobility? Obviously, there are partnerships necessary with state and federal entities when it comes to road projects, but what are your ideas to address adequate roadways and mobility as the city continues to grow exponentially?
The city used to partner with Brazoria County to rehabilitate asphalt streets in Alvin every year. I don't know if that program is still working right now. It seemed to work well in the past. If we still do it, that's great. If not, we need to maybe revisit that or a similar program. Also, I know that the state has recently passed the ability for cities to create a TRZ, which I had to look that up. It was a Transportation Reinvestment Zone. I don't know all the details, but I think that's something that the city should probably investigate because that would potentially help Alvin fund future roads.
Okay, thank you. Larry, you're going to begin with question six. The chamber is focused on supporting our member business, many of which are small businesses. How do you see the city supporting and encouraging small business development in the next few years?
That's why the partnership between the City of Alvin and the chamber is important. I do not own a small business. I grew up working in my father's drugstore, and my wife, Beth, had a CPA practice in Manville for many years. I have spoken to some business owners. One of them gave me an idea that when the city goes out for bids, maybe there's some way we could give a local business a few extra points toward that bid process in the ability to maybe keep the dollars local. I think the City of Houston has a similar plan. Also believe the city and the chamber needs to advertise shopping locally first. If we shop local first, the dollars stay here, the jobs are created here, and it helps the Alvin economy. SAF was a slogan that the chamber used in the past. I'll tell you later.
Megan, the chamber is focused on supporting our member business, many of which are small businesses. How do you see the city supporting and encouraging small business development in the next few years?
Like my opponent, I do agree that the City of Alvin should partner with, or continue to partner with, the Chamber of Commerce to promote small businesses. The city already has the Downtown Location Assistance Program and the Business Improvement Grants that they offer, and I don't think people know that those are resources that can be taken advantage of. And if we advertise that more, then I think more people would be inclined to open a small business since they know that they would have the support from the community. Another thing I would do is, if you've been paying attention, the last council meeting, one of the council members proposed putting on the agenda some type of special district for the downtown area, special business district. I think if we did that and promoted and gave extra points to small businesses and businesses that were more walkable, it would revitalize downtown and it would make a thriving area for small business in Alvin.
Okay, thank you. We're down to final question. Megan- Megan, we're going to start with you. You will be part of a team on City Council. How will you work with the other elected officials, staff, and other entities, but keep your unique individuality?
Well, this is something, again, that I think my legal skills will lend themselves to. I'm able to communicate with opposing parties, with colleagues, to advocate for a particular position. And so, I'm, I'm used to doing this on a regular basis for my clients every day. And so, I would continue to be a good listener, figure out what the real needs are, and communicate suggestions and ideas that I think would be helpful to fill those needs. I'm also not afraid to ask tough questions, or to challenge people and play the devil's advocate, so to speak, in tough situations. And so, you know, I'm just not afraid to shy away from doing whatever needs to be done and encouraging more public discourse about a particular situation or item on the agenda.
Thank you. Larry, you will be part of a team on City Council. How will you work with the other elected officials, staff, and other entities, but keep your unique individuality?
Anyone willing to step up and run for office and to, to serve has a strong personality. And I think anyone would agree with me that they also need a thick skin. But once you're elected, you have to become part of the team to help the city move forward. I believe you can remain a part of the team and still have teamwork, but you need to vote what you think is best for the City of Alvin. The true proof that the team is working would be, if there is some dissent, that's okay, you work through it, but then you come back as a team to go through the next topic on the agenda or, or whatnot. As for the city staff, my style is to help them any way I can, give them the tools they need, and then just step out of the way and let them do their jobs, because they are the professionals. Thank you.
All right, we're going to close tonight with your final closing statements. You'll have two minutes each, and we will do them in the reverse order that we did the opening statements. So, Megan, you...
I don't remember. I'll go first.
I have that Larry went first on the opening statements in my notes here. So, we're going to let Megan go first. With your closing statement, go ahead and start when you're ready.
So, I also just want to say thank you to the Alvin-Manville Chamber of Commerce and Heights Baptist for hosting this event and letting us come here and use this space today. I also want to thank everyone in the audience for taking the time to come and visit and see what all this is about, and learn more about the candidates. I just want to say that, number one, I didn't get to finish my intended answers for all the questions. So, if you felt like I cut myself off, and you need clarification, or would like me to wrap it up, please meet me out in the lobby. I'll be happy to answer your questions and speak with you about that. Also, I think Alvin is headed in the right direction. I want to be clear, though, I'm not against development. I just want to make sure we're being intentional about what we're doing. It's inevitable that Alvin is going to grow, and I think it's important that we do. But, there should be no reason why we're entering negotiations from a place of weakness. We need to be entering all negotiations from a place of strength. And we need to realize our value, so that way, we can make the best deals that will benefit the citizens. Another thing is that I want to work towards Alvin's future. And I feel like I'm newer, and I have a fresh perspective and a fresh vision. And so, I hope that you can trust me with your vote on May 6th, and that you would find that I'm the best candidate for the job, and vote for me on Election Day. Last quick thing, this Thursday, April 6th, is the last day to register to vote. So, if you're not registered to vote, or if you don't know how, or you need any help, you can visit my Facebook page, Megan DeKaiser for Alvin City Council, District E. And on there, I have posted a tutorial to show you exactly how to get registered to vote quickly, in just a few minutes, straight from your smartphone. Thank you.
I also want to thank the Alvin-Manville Chamber of Commerce for hosting this candidate forum. I especially want to thank you, the audience, for listening to me. I'm not the greatest public speaker. Hopefully, you won't hold that against me. I also want to thank all the people that have encouraged me and supported me, and thanked me for running in this election. I also want to thank my opponent, Megan DeKaiser. We've met a couple of times, we've sent many texts back and forth, we've been respectful to each other, and I think that helps everybody in District E. Remember, early voting starts April 24th, and Election Day is May 6th. I appreciate your vote for City Council, District E. Thank you.
And that concludes our forum. For the candidates for City Council, District E for Alvin, I want to thank both Megan DeKaiser and Larry Nelson for joining us this evening.